Good evening, folks. It's seven o'clock. We'll get started. I'll call the December 17th, 2013 meeting of the Iredale County Board of Commissioners to order. And join us in our invocation, please. Father, we come to you again, and we're just thankful, especially in this season, this Christmas season. Father, we're...you came to visit man, and we thank you for that. And we thank you that in this time of the year that we just paused to give you thanks for that. And that, as always customary, we realize that we're bankrupt of wisdom, and that all wisdom comes from you. So we humbly ask for it this evening. And as we begin the new year, we just ask your blessing going forward. And we just pray that throughout that year, we'll always be thankful. We ask your blessing upon this county and its people. And we ask it in your name and for your sake. Amen. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to this agenda from the staff this evening?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to add two items, both under closed session. And they're under property acquisition, and that's General Statute 143, 318, 11A5.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. Okay. Any adjustments to this agenda from any member of the board this evening? Hearing none, the floor is open for adoption of this agenda as amended.
Motion to accept the agenda.
We have a motion to adopt this agenda from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll move at this point to appointments before the board. We have a request for review of the Community Services Block Grant application for refunding. This is memo number one. Ryan Duncan has an appointment before the board. Mr. Duncan, if you'd come forward, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
It seems like it was just yesterday that we were here last year doing the same thing. We have to present our annual anti-poverty plan to the county commissioners on a yearly basis prior to us submitting an application to North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Office of Economic Opportunity in regards to the Community Services Block Grant Program. So just to kind of give you a little history, you have the application before you. So typically what I'll do is review the accomplishments that we made in the prior year. The program year for CSBG runs from July 1 through June 30. So in the past program year, running July 1 of '12 through June 30 of '13, through the funds of that program, we were able to help 21 families to rise above poverty, just through the different things that we do with families. The funding is greater for next year, and it's kind of a fluke, but we're not going to complain. There was a allocation change. The process changed a little bit in terms of the formula at the state level. So it increased to $265,522, 265,522, from 168,924, which we have for the current year. Most of that had to do with the fact that there are about four counties that are unserved, and DHHS had that money sitting there that they had drawn down from the feds, so they made it available to other counties. We anticipate that funding dropping in the following year. As you can tell by the application, we also serve Alexander County as well. Currently, we propose...I'm sorry, we have...we're serving 79 families. In the past year, as I said, 21 of those moved above poverty, 19 gained employment, three gained better employment, three obtained employment with medical benefits, 16 completed education and training programs, five secured standard housing. We provided 31 families emergency assistance. The annual positive change in income was $10,860. And those families were able to secure employment at an average wage rate of $9.43. So the program for that we're proposing for the next year, for the most part, mirrors what we've done in the past year. We do three-year projects. So we'll be going into the third year of our three-year plan next year. And so it's pretty routine for us. I'll certainly entertain any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions, Mr. Duncan?
I looked, and there's an awful lot that you try to do to get somebody kind of into the mainstream of employment. What kind of success rate did y'all have last year, do you know? Where people actually entered the workforce, stayed employed, and didn't need your assistance anymore?
Yeah, and that's those 21 families that I mentioned. So we served about...we were contracted to serve 50. I think we served 65, 66 families. But the state allows us to keep those families for three years.
Okay.
So we had 21 of them to actually graduate from the program.
Mr. Duncan, you said you served 21, or had 21 pretty much move above poverty level?
Yes, sir.
What goals do you have for the coming year?
Our current year goals...you'll bear with me one second here. Let me answer that, Commissioner Norman, like this. We have a long-range plan, a long-range goal that we have to establish every three years. And essentially, we break it down into thirds. So when we did our three-year plan, like I said, of which we'll be going into year three, the goal was to increase opportunities for 150 families. So we will, at the end of three years, we'll have served 150 families. So we anticipate at least 15 rising above poverty. Our goal was 45 families for three years. We've done 37 in two years already. So in order to meet our goal in terms of the state, we only have eight families to get above poverty. We really anticipate probably another 20, 21 families moving above.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
I think I saw a $4.2 million figure in there somewhere. Is that the total budget for Icarus?
That's the total budget for Icarus, yes, sir.
How many employees do you have?
We've got 78.
78 employees?
Yes, sir.
Is that full-time, or...?
Full-time. Full-time. We serve four counties.
Oh, four? I thought it was just Iredale and Alexander.
No, we do Head Start in Iredale and Catawba County.
Oh, okay.
And we also have a youth program that we run in Lincoln County, as well as weatherization in Iredale and Lincoln County. We do a youth program here as well.
How much of your budget is the weatherization program?
This year's...
It's around numbers, you know that.
It's about $505,000 this year.
Okay.
And that's really up in the air for next year, as it stands right now, this last budget agreement that was passed notwithstanding. Weatherization was going to be funded at $68 million for the nation, whereas typically it was around $212 million. So it's going to be interesting with weatherization next year.
Okay. Okay. What other big-ticket items in your budget? Head Start, your other biggest ticket item?
Head Start is our largest program, yes, sir. It's about $2.2 million.
About half your total budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? I guess not. My understanding, no action to be taken. It's merely for our review. So thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. I have a question from Kenny Miller, Assistant Superintendent. Good evening, Dr. Miller.
Good evening. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Smith. The Iredale Stateful Schools Maintenance Department has attempted to internalize a lot of our processes, and we're trying to meet compliance. This is going to mean more permitting and zoning permits for us. Our board is requesting a waiver of permit fees and zoning fees for internal work only. This is not for all work that we will do. Any subcontractors will still pay the initial fees. The reason we're asking for this is because technically the money that we use comes from the county, and so we think it'd be much more efficient for us, and it'll help us to get more projects completed and more work done. Be glad to answer any questions. You have a resolution by our board and a letter of request.
Any questions, Dr. Miller? Do you know how much on a annualized basis we could be talking about?
We project...we will be increasing the number of permits and zonings. We project anywhere from 35,000 to 45,000. I've talked to Mr. Niblock. He and I have worked a little bit on trying to crunch those numbers.
You said in your request you were not asking for exemptions for fees paid by people that you contracted.
That's correct.
Do you anticipate maintaining that stance if we get into the situation where we're building new buildings or doing major renovation to buildings, most of which would be contracted, worked unbox?
No, we would not ask for waiver at that point. That's part of the resolution, and also is part of the letter that we've drafted.
Well, I know it is currently, but I don't know, you know...
Oh, well, I can't speak for the board, so, you know. But my anticipation, what we're trying to do is just internalize some of these processes so that we can do a lot of this work internally. We have internal capacity now that we did not have before.
I don't want to sound too bureaucratic here. The only concern I got, Dr. Miller, is that the code enforcement folks, we have their operations set up to significant degree as an enterprise fund. So this is money that they actually earn.
Correct.
And I know when the economy gets a little sluggish like it did, you know, they like to remind us over there that they actually brought in more money back in the good times than they actually spent from the county. So they'd like a little consideration. That's pretty hard to argue with. I was just thinking out loud here, is there any way that this money could be paid to code enforcement, then we could turn around and refund it to you? I don't want it to...I know we're not talking a whole lot of money, but it is money that they earn.
Um, you know, that...
Am I creating too much of a bureaucratic process here?
Right. I don't want to speak for...
Yeah, that's what I would suggest. This, when we're foregoing a fee, that is revenue that it's costing the county. And although code enforcement is not legally set up as an enterprise fund, it more or less operates that way. And if we waive the fees, we are in essence appropriating another $40,000 or so per year to Iredale Stateful Schools system. I think that if we do do this, I would suggest that the system pay the fees upfront, the county agree to, at some point, either pass a budget amendment or include in the next year's budget the amount of those fees in addition to what you normally get according to the, you know, formula you use. And that way, the accounting would be accurate. It would accurately reflect what we're actually spending. And everybody would come out the same, except for just carrying the money maybe for a period of the year.
May I?
Yeah.
May I? And that's fine. We appreciate whatever the commission can help us with. Our budget is very finite, and it's been impacted very heavily with budget cuts. So $30,000 or $40,000 extra that we pay during the year could be money that'd be going toward, you know, fixing items or doing things. So though we are getting that money back at the end of the day, there is a certain lag for us in our budget. And we run about...we really run about 98% or 99%, 99.5% of that budget. And it's real hard some years to balance it. So I would just throw that out as a point of discussion.
Well, I would point out that ISS did get an increase of about $800,000 capital outlay money this year because the debt service was less, and we use a formula in...
Correct.
Less debt service. You had, you know, you had some extra money for capital outlay money.
But this is not any recurring capital money. This is maintenance, which is a local current expense.
I understand that, but it, you know, that's money for buildings, equipment, repair, and so forth.
Right.
Extra that you had. So I'll just point you that out. The other thing that we need to remember is if...we need to take into consideration, if we grant this for ISS, we'll obviously have to do the same thing for Mooreville Graded School District.
Right.
And I anticipate that Mitchell Community College would also ask for the same consideration, since we also fund them.
So really, if you want to just agree that we would refund that amount of money that was incurred during the course of the year, do we actually have to vote on anything? Or can we just state that we agree to do a budget amendment at the end of the year and transfer those dollars back to the Mitchell, Mooresville, and ISS? And I know that doesn't get you money as you go, but it does get it back, and that's better than you were when you walked in.
Oh, we definitely appreciate it.
So do we need to...is that something we have to vote on, or can we just state that that is our intent?
I think you're safe stating that it's your intent, and then we appropriate through the budget next year, and that will basically take care of it.
I was going to ask you, do you see by suggesting that, or are we creating a lot of unnecessary paperwork, or it's no big deal? You folks can administer that pretty easy, or...?
I don't think it's going to be a big deal. I've talked to Susan about this, and we've worked out a situation where it's fairly easily accounted for.
Okay. Well, if they went through the trouble of adopting a resolution, let's take action on it and give them a clear answer.
Okay. All right. You want me to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners agree to refund to Iredale Stateful Schools, Mooresville Graded School District, and Mitchell Community College any money that they directly pay for internal projects requiring building permits or inspection fees from our inspections department. And that that money be refunded at the end of the fiscal year.
This would be limited to inspections needing for ongoing maintenance. It wouldn't be for capital expenditures of new buildings and so forth?
I think I said it was for internal...
Okay.
Internal capacity.
Okay. All right.
If ISS employees do not do the work, then it would not...
Okay. All right. Good enough. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Before we leave, Dr. Miller, I have one suggestion.
Yes, sir.
It occurred to me that there are either five or six schools that are served by the City of Stateful for their electricity, and I think there are about seven that get water and sewer from the City of Stateful. Now, I wouldn't expect them to completely waive those fees, but I would suggest that the board ask you to appear before them and maybe ask for a reduction or an adjustment or a little bit of a relief from those fees.
Be more than happy to.
I have an idea. I know what the answer would be, but it doesn't hurt to ask.
I have no problem with that.
Well, I said, I wouldn't expect them to completely waive them, but they might give you a more favorable rate or something.
Actually, I think Troutman does give us a little bit more favorable rate.
Well, Stateful has...actually has several different industrial and commercial electric rates, and I don't know if you get the most favorable or not.
Typically, they do give us the best rate that they have.
They would try to do a little better.
Yeah, they've helped us quite a bit. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. That brings us to administrative matters. We have a request for a new rescue district by Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department. Mr. Salibi, you want to open the discussion on this?
Yes, I will. I'll start the ball rolling. Commissioner Johnson and other commissioners. Tonight, I would like to introduce two fire departments from the southern part of Iredale County who are seeking to form their own rescue districts. Mountmore and South Iredale Volunteer Fire Departments follow three other fire departments from the southern area of the county who have been granted the same request. The Town of Mooresville, which is the dark blue in the middle, approached the board on May 3 of 2011, followed by Shepherds, which is the light blue, and Lake Norman, which is the tan color. They came to you in September of this past year. They also requested their area be turned into a rescue district. And they wanted to serve those areas with rescue services and with first medical first responder services. All three were granted their request. Tonight, Mountmore and South Iredale. Mountmore in the green first, then South Iredale on the yellow on the east side. They have completed all the county requirements as outlined in your agenda packet to petition for their own rescue district. At this time, I would like to ask the representatives of these departments to present their request to you, and then also answer your questions. The first one up will be Chief Roger Hoover from Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department, followed by Chief Howard Overcash, representing South Iredale Volunteer Fire Department. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Smith. On behalf of Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department, I'd like to make a formal request to be established as their own rescue district. We're currently recognized by the North Carolina Office of Rescue and EMS as a light rescue provider and medical responder provider. By making this request, we would also ask that any funding Mooresville Rescue Squad receives from our district to be provided to Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department. In your packet, you will see that we provided dispatch protocol for ECOM, a mutual aid agreement with the Town of Mooresville Fire and Rescue to provide mutual aid rescue services if needed, and also our certifications.
Okay. Any questions, Chief Hoover? Let me address this to both of you gentlemen, Chief Hoover and Chief Overcash. I want to express the appreciation of the Board of Commissioners for the approach that both of you gentlemen, your respective fire departments have taken through this process. You're actually driving the fire truck down the road at 50 miles an hour, and we're still trying to assemble it because you had an ongoing mission. And as I communicated to both of you, circumstances kind of thrust the decision upon us. And we realize that we, at times, have inconvenienced you folks, but you've been very understanding and a pleasure to work with. And it is something the county's never done before, these various service districts. It's...over time, as the population of the county grows, it's probably a process that will be replicated at least once more at some point in the future. And we apologize for any missteps we made. We assure you they've been unintentional, unintentional, but your understanding has been greatly appreciated. And we look forward to working with you and establishing these rescue districts and your expanded responsibilities, and looking forward to assisting you any way we can. But I wanted to publicly express our thanks for the job that you've done.
I appreciate the kind words. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. So the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this request.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Chief Overcash, welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Chairman, Commissioners, the South Iredale Fire Department is requesting their own rescue district in the South Iredale Fire Service Area. We too have our light rescue and our medical responder and meet the state requirements. And also, any funding that would follow would be greatly appreciated.
Okay. Any questions of Chief Overcash? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
I want to thank Mr. Salibi for his work, and these things have gone pretty smooth thanks to his diligence. I'm going to let you pick it up here, Mr. Smith.
You're doing good. Item C is a request by the Tax Administration Departments for approval of a contract with pictometry. And Bill Furchess is going to begin...Malia Miller and Bill Furchess will be leading the discussion, and there's other members of the tax office here in case we need their input as well.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
In one year, in two weeks, the 2015 revaluation will become effective. This will be the seventh in-house reevaluation performed by Iredale County personnel. Iredale County has a history of excellent revaluations. As you know, you haven't seen the problems here. You've seen in some other counties. We have an excellent appraisal staff, and they have...they are doing an excellent job currently getting ready. getting ready for this new revaluation. We had a contract to provide oblique imagery for Iredale County that we have been trying to get for about six or eight years. The contract we signed, we had worked during that entire time with Pictometry, unfortunately, the price was cost prohibitive, and we were unable to do it for 2011. Another company came in here a couple of years ago and convinced our assessor at the time that they could provide the service at a more reasonable cost, or seemed to be more reasonable, and we signed a contract with Sanford Map Company in June of 2012. It was supposed to be completed in April the 19th of 2013. About that time, the assessor approved an extension to June the 3rd. On November the 25th of this year, after consulting with the county manager and Bill Pope, our county attorney, I requested that Mr. Pope send a letter of termination to Sanford Map Company, and we terminated that contract. At the same time, we had been in discussion with Pictometry, and as sometimes happens, after you wait a few years, the price came to us. And we were, Pictometry, we were fortunate, they had flown two adjoining counties, or one southeast, Mecklenburg and Cabarrus County, and they had some images of Iredale County. And they allowed us to utilize some of those images on a short-term basis to see if we were interested in the product. Well, we've had it for 22 days, and it's done an excellent job for us in 3,179 properties that they've looked at through Pictometry. They have found $7,600,000 in unreported improvements to real property. And that's about 3.4% of our total parcels. What we're here tonight for is to ask you to, if we could, to approve substituting our contract with Pictometry for the contract we had with Sanford Map Company. We have the money budgeted, matter of fact, actually, it will come in for this year at $13,500 less expensive than it would have been with Sanford. I believe I sent an email to Mr. Smith here about three weeks ago, he forwarded it to you a couple of weeks ago, and also in the memo that I sent to you with the board that outlined the contract, we are recommending a six-year contract, and the reason we want a six-year contract, there's price advantages, and there's an opt-out after three years if the funds are not appropriated. So, we can have a three-year contract for approximately $108,000, paying $34,400, somewhere in that range, for this year, and then about $37 for 2015 and 16. And then at that point, we have the opportunity to opt-out or renegotiate a contract. I'm sure there's plenty of questions you have, and I brought Malia Miller with me, and I brought some technical expertise out here in the audience if you would like to hear from them.
Okay. Any questions, these folks? In the memo we have, it says there's a $40,406 savings over six years, is that the difference between this contract and the previous?
No, sir, it's the difference between the contract with Pictometry. If you do it, a three-year contract is much more expensive than a six-year contract, the advantage being that you have the opt-out after three.
There's no exit penalty if you get out after three.
No, sir. Just if it's not appropriated, we're out.
I don't see a problem. When you go through the scheduled evaluations, if people could sit in those meetings, I think you folks do a great job of minimizing the subjectivity in the process as best you can. If folks understood how objective that process and the pains you take to go and make that process as objective as possible, I think they'd draw some comfort for that. From my understanding, this is going to enhance your ability to do that, so I just don't see a problem. Okay. No other questions, the floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, you folks.
Yes, sir, you too.
Item D is a request from Finance to adopt a resolution and call for a public hearing for installment financing with Energy United, and Susan Robertson will make that request.
Thank you. In October 2012, this board considered a request from Dr. Kenny Miller to apply for a USDA red-leg loan that would flow through Energy United to the county. The purpose of the grant is to provide updates and replace existing HVAC equipment. Originally, the request was going to be for West Iredale High School as well as North Iredale Middle, but when the engineered cost estimates came in, they quickly realized they would only be able to do West Iredale High School. This is an interest-free loan for 10 years to get this work done. The county, the way this will work is the county will give a deed of trust in West Iredale High School until the loan is completely retired, and the payment, the annual payment, will come out of the capital outlay formula funding for Iredale Statesville Schools. The next step, I should say, in the process is for the board to adopt a resolution so that I may apply to the local government commission for approval of this financing. The resolution makes certain findings that the obligation under the installment financing agreement is secured by a deed of trust, that the annual payments are sufficient to retire the debt in 10 years, that there will be no tax increase required to pay the debt, and that the board is satisfied that this is a better way of financing than trying to issue a GO bond for this amount, it's not eligible for a revenue bond, and it authorizes me, you're authorizing me, to file the application. It also directs the clerk to the board to publish a legal notice and call for a public hearing on January 7th so that you may hear any comments that the public may have regarding the financing. And Dr. Miller, I think, is still here, if you have any specific questions about what their plans are for West Iredale.
Any questions, Ms. Robertson or Dr. Miller?
If you can just affirm or whatever, the $1.3 million for the HVAC work, I mean, that's work that needed to be done and not was chosen to be done because we just had the opportunity to borrow money interest-free?
It is definitely needed to be done. This is the whole section of the building that was not included in its previous evaluation, and includes the oldest and capital-worthed building we have.
Okay, thank you.
And I might add, too, that the latest estimates are around $1.6 million, is that correct, Kenny? And the Iredale Statesville School Board has adopted a resolution that they will pay from its fund balance or other resources to complete the project, whatever is over and above the financing.
Any other questions? The request is to adopt this resolution and call for a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion. I have one or two comments. You know, if you are going to finance anything, interest-free is hard to beat, I agree with that. And the amount of money, although it's a large amount of money for an individual in government terms, it's not as large. I do have one or two quibbles with the, you know, I've had this before with the, I guess the staff gives all of the information, but where it says downside, none known, there might not be much downside, but there is a downside. One of the downside is, you know, that is money that is being spent, maybe spent for something necessary, I don't dispute that. But the downside is that the taxpayers of Iredale County, the people who earned the money in the first place, will have $1.3 million less. It may be for a necessary purpose, but that is a downside. And even though this is interest-free, there are some minimal legal costs and so forth involved, you'd have to draft a deed of trust and a few things like that, that's probably a fairly minor expense, but it is some expense. So, when you say downside, I would like to see the true downside reflected, that doesn't mean this isn't something we should do, I think it probably is. I don't have a big problem with it, but there is a downside and a trade-off for almost everything we do, and I think that should be reflected in the future.
I'll make sure to include those types of things next time, and then I'll also ask the school system to provide an estimate of utility savings that they'll enjoy from this project.
Be an upside.
Because I think it'll clearly be offset, but I'll do that.
That might be an upside, sure. Okay. All right. Did we have a motion or not?
Motion to adopt the resolution and call for a public hearing.
We have a motion to adopt this resolution and call for a public hearing, it comes from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let me turn the next three items, E, F, and G, over to Jane Murray, our Health Director.
Good evening. The first budget amendment is requesting $3,000 for our electronic medical records, our lab module does not have a locking feature, and that's a huge liability concern, and we've worked with the company for over a year that we utilized to try to get that to happen, and they will not do that without the $3,000, which was their estimate of time to do that. It's a big liability issue. If we perform a lab test, and for some reason or another, that's changed, that locking feature's not there, we could be hugely liable if misdiagnosis occurs. And also, for our Medicare and Medicaid licensure or CLIA, that is required, and we've got an inspection coming up in April, so we've held off as long as we can and hope that we could do this without the dollars, but tonight, we're here asking for that $3,000.
Okay, any questions, Ms. Murray? I saw with the memo that you tried to get, I guess, the provider software, provider pay for this, and they did not.
No, and the unfortunate thing is we'll get this accomplished, and other people will benefit, I'm sure, other organizations that are using that, but we have to protect our community and make sure that we're doing the right thing. It's a feature that probably should have been in the system initially.
I'm wondering, yeah, because we've initially been in there. There was a fair amount of discussion, I don't think the staff was crazy about making this request, and I don't think the Board of Health was crazy about voting for it, but I think, well, I know it was unanimous agreed upon, it was something to do, and as Ms. Murray said, other health departments are probably going to encounter the same problem, and they may be a beneficiary of what we're doing here, but nevertheless, we felt like our folks are the ones who called it, brought it to their attention, and we couldn't get anything to do about it, anything, get them to do anything about it, but, as I said, at the meeting, we were way out in front of everybody, and the leading edge is oftentimes the bleeding edge.
True.
This is minor compared to some expenses. The health department, over the past several years, has spent a good bit of money to comply with HIPAA requirements and so forth. Another one of these mandates that supposedly doesn't cost anything, and it does. Any other questions, Ms. Murray? I hate to get picky again, but where it said downside, there is a downside, and the downside is...
Can we agree that that's always a downside on every single thing we're ever going to spend money on?
No, if it's a grant with no strings attached or something, it would be none, but we have $3,000 less of Med Max money.
Y'all made an argument that grant money came from somebody, but we already went through this, so let's just accept the fact that that is a downside, that government spends money.
That we have $3,000 less of Med Max money that could have been spent for some other purpose.
We'll take that into consideration, thank you.
You know, if we hadn't had to do this, we could have spent it on something else. Well, I'll exercise one prerogative that I have as chairman, and oftentimes, when you sit here between two people making good points, you struggle to keep both feet firmly planted in midair. And I congratulate both of these gentlemen on the points well made, and I would make a motion that we approve this request. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The second budget amendment is to receive and expend an additional $3,995 from the Healthy Communities Grant, and our staff have worked with Mr. Robert Woody. What we would like to do is to purchase four professional weatherproof communication kiosks with brochure holders, they're two-sided, and we worked with Mr. Woody to pick the areas that we would like to put those in, and certainly will use that to encourage active living, tobacco-free parks, healthy eating habits to reduce chronic diseases in Iredale County.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Murray? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 15.
We have a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 15 from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The third agenda item request is, we've been here before you several times about our new program that we started in August, our lab service, and as we move forward, there are additional lab tests that are requested by our providers in the community, and so we have some new tests that we would like for you to approve the fees, and just wanted to share with you, since August, this has generated $8,100 in additional revenue for the health department. We've completed 755 tests and served 186 clients, and it's a cash-only service, the fees are much reduced from anywhere else, and the community really is benefiting from this.
Wouldn't want to run a crime lab, would you? Said you wouldn't want to run a crime lab, would you?
I don't know, we might get a look at that.
Sometimes I should keep my thoughts to myself. Any questions, Ms. Murray, in regard to this? Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item H is a request by the Tax Administration for approval of November refunds and releases, and these are all in order. Recommend approval.
Okay. Floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve comes from Commissioner Boone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And aye is a request for approval of the December 3rd, 2013 minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We have no announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, appointments to boards and commissions, the Central Line Economic Development Commission. Staff is recommending we appoint Ms. Beth Dirks, our Deputy County Manager. Floor is open for nominations. Floor is open for nominations.
Recommend we appoint Beth Dirks.
Okay. Ms. Beth Dirks, our deputy county manager is nominated. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I move we close the floor to nominations, appointment to Dirks by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I would like to, since it says under appointments to boards and commissions, I would like to place into nomination for our health board, Dr. Tiffany Bradford, as the veterinarian appointment for that board. Madam Clerk, I'll, I'll get you the note with her address and phone number, I have it right here after the meeting. Are there any other nominations for this appointment to the health board? I would move we close the floor to nominations, appoint Dr. Bradford by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Any unfinished business? Public comment, period. County managers report.
One minor issue, the monthly reports that y'all receive, they're going to be a little late. Usually we try and get them by the second meeting, but with all the transition staff-wise, they should be coming fairly soon.
Okay. Oh, you have?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would move we go into closed session under General Statute 143, 318, 11A5, in regard to property acquisition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.[718.29]
There will be action taken as a result of our closed session. At this point, I would offer a motion that we approve Budget Amendment Number 15A. This will appropriate fund balance restricted for Mitchell Community College for the purchase of contiguous property on North Ray Street. This budget amendment will be in the amount of $136,500. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries unanimously. All for a motion that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries unanimously.